Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough of Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on December 19, 2018, and notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building.
Thank you, April. Can everybody join me in saluting the flag of our nation? Much pleasure ladies and gentlemen. To the United States of America and to your public who is standing with my nation, my God, and the people of the world, the reason and justice for all. Everybody remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops, their families, and all our emergency service personnel. Pat McCann, who died since our last meeting, who was the athletic director of St. Rose for many years, lived in town almost his whole life. And Dave Maul, the president of the fishing club, passed away since our last meeting. And also, let's remember all the families in New Zealand of that tragedy. Thank you. All right, workshop, does anybody have anything on workshop? The only thing I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to let the rest of the council know, that we are looking at making some changes down at the tail of the vein on how it's being operated. But we don't have anything really finalized yet, but it'll be coming up in the next meeting. So if anybody has any ideas or anything like that that they want to bring forward, we'll be working on that for the next meeting to make those changes. That's all I have. Petitions, anybody in the audience want to come up with a petition? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Approval minutes.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th meeting? Can I have a second? All in favor?
And moving on to reports of council. Councilwoman Wong?
This, oh, turn on light, so we can hear. This week we had a meeting with the Parks and Recreation, can you hear me, Mary? Is that better? Thank you. Parks and Recreation. And it was very enlightening, there's an awful lot to do on this committee. One of the things we discussed is, there's a waiting list, people are looking for memorial benches to be placed around town, various parks and whatever, so we're looking into that and hope to get back to you with the next meeting with some more information on it. And that's about it for now, thank you.
Thank you. Council, the president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Harvard Commission had a meeting last Tuesday, some good things, the jet ski racks are sold out with a waiting list, the kayak racks are sold out with a waiting list, there's going to be a new set of racks to be built in a different location, not right over by the boat ramp, but all the way on the west end of Cleary Park, here, there's a set of steps that goes down to the river. It wouldn't be visible from across the street, so the neighbors across the street won't see it because it would be lower. That was very encouraging. I tell you what, when it gets built, I'm going to move my boat right over there, it's the perfect spot. We are looking at the price we charge for the gas, seems to us that we could be charging more, making more, and we're going to look at that. The boat show is coming, the 12th and 13th, or 13th and 14th? 13th and 14th, Saturday and Sunday in April.
May, June?
Yep. Boat show at the Marine, start small, starting small. If they sell a boat, they rent a slip. Very nice, very nicely done. All right, and that's it for me, thanks.
Do you want to just mention that wrestling?
Oh, that's right, thanks for a completely right. All right, want to give a shout out to Lucas Robano, last meeting I mentioned the two girls who live in Belmar who won in the state tournament, they go to Meniscus High School. Lucas Robano lives on 13th Avenue, he goes to Camden Catholic. Not only was he state champ this year at 145, he was state champion last year at 131? Got to double check that, but he's obviously getting bigger. I saw some of his stats today, he's a four-time district champion, four-time regional champion, four-time place winner in the state tournament, as a freshman he placed six, now, you know, wrestling, that's no small feat. Actually, winning the state championship is really pretty hard. All three of those wrestlers are going to be here at the next meeting so we can recognize them, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Lucas and his model, who's been delightful on the phone. Thanks.
All right, thank you, council president. I have a few things, if you see the cameras tonight over there, we are now live streaming our meetings on Facebook. So not only recording them, they're going out live streaming, so. Thanks, John, for handling that. Couple things, library meeting, the library is looking to hire an executive director, and they're also looking into going out for, well, there's a grant out there, it's a one-to-one grant to improve some of the building or to add on to it, so the library is looking into that aspect and discussing those things. So I know Jerry's right here in the front row, and she's on the library committee, but there's a lot of things going on with the library that the library committee's been working on. And today, we were out in Trenton with D P, Jerry Dasty and Kirsham and myself, along with Peter Avaki, trying to recapture some of that money, the $650,000 that we lost because of the bidding process for the engineers. So we had a lengthy meeting, it was very positive, they're going to let us know in a couple of weeks, so everybody, please say a little prayer for us, because we desperately need it. But other than that, I think that's all my report is for tonight. April, should we move on to the consent agenda?
First is public session.
Oh, sorry, public session on any of the resolution items. Yes, Trina.
Good evening, Trina Clapton, B Street. Could you just explain the last resolution, 84, I read it outside, but I still don't quite understand it, the reassignment from C port to 701 main, could you explain that a little bit?
The building has been sold, and the assignment is moving over to the new owner.
Okay, what does that mean? What building has been sold?
The 701 Main Street building.
Where Gaps used to be.
The new building over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just transferring, basically it's transferring the pilot program over to the new owner.
Oh.
That's why it has to come before resolution tonight.
Uh-huh, okay, and is it true that there's apartments in that building? Are they going to be apartments or condos?
In the 701? I think it's all apartments, I'm not sure, it has a store downstairs with furniture stores and I believe it's apartments, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not sure of that one.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public session.
You have a motion to close the public session?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. That's the consent agenda.
Next, can we have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Ossoff?
Yes. We have no ordinances tonight, so we're moving on to public session. Does anybody have anything that they want to talk about?
Yes.
Separated.
More time to talk. You just state your name and address.
My name is Orgy Di Pasqua, this is my daughter, Terri Longo, and January 16, I was attacked by a rapid raccoon, and I have several questions that I'd like, because I have to know a few things, why it has happened. Because I've been through great depression, I've been through an awful lot of hurt, my daughter and I have been through so much, and I guess everybody already knows, but I would just like to go through what's happened. January 16, I stepped off my back porch around 3:30 PM in the afternoon, on my way out to cover of the fireplace, that the cover blew off, and I was only about two feet off of my porch, and that's when the raccoon attacked me, on my foot first, and he bit into the blood vein in my heel, missed my Achilles, and I was right at that point in a pool of my blood. I started screaming, my daughter was upstairs and ran out, and she took off the drain off the gutter trying to hit it. I have a 25-foot backyard, I had it on my foot for approximately 10 feet. I went to think for whatever I could do to get it off my foot, and I reached down thinking, I don't know the animal, I reached down thinking that I could get it off of my foot, and in a second, it grabbed the whole thumb portion of my right hand. And I kept on going, I was walking through my blood, and I got to a point, I thought I was going to have to lay down and go to sleep. Terri and I continued, and after about 22 feet, Billy Sullivan, my next-door neighbor, came out with a very heavy shawl and beat it on its head, I don't know how many times. He told us to go in the house, and my daughter and I went in, I was really bleeding from my foot, my kitchen floor was just a lake of blood. Thank God the cavalry came, our first aid and our police department, and asked what had happened, and I told them that it was bitten by a raccoon. It was told to me, it must have been the one that was sighted on 11th Avenue two days What I want to know, in three days, that this thing was out walking around, I do believe there was more than one, why in the world wasn't the animal control somewhere to stop this animal? I learned the next day that my neighbor on the 500 block, before, that was around 3, let's say, and it tried to attack her and a friend getting out of the car, it was reported to the police, and I guess my neighbor said, "It's a rapid raccoon," and I understand the story was, how do you know it's rattles? Nobody showed up, and that raccoon made its way to E Street and went south, and I thought it possibly went across the driveway. I've been in my home since 1937, 60 years of my life I've spent there, it must have come across the three yards into my yard. After I was being loaded into the first aid, a raccoon was down at the sewer on E and 8th Avenue. I don't understand why somebody, why the control wasn't there, why the animal control in three days wasn't, this never had to happen to me. This has been a very, very serious situation for me, my daughter, and my family, and you have no idea what it was being in the hospital that day, of going through all my wounds, of looking for teeth that could have broke off from the raccoon. I had the most wonderful group of people in that hospital, I got three rabies shots that day, and I got needles in all of my wounds. I was supposed to come home at 10 o'clock at night with my children, and when I went to get up, I didn't do too well, and they had to do an EKG, and I had to stay another two and a half hours, I told my children to go home and rest, you know what they did? They went home and cleaned up all the kitchen floor with all the blood everywhere. I have to stay, I don't know where the fault goes here, but I'm doing this for the people of Belmar and Lake Como, because I am petrified, that attacked the cat, that's one more raccoon on the loose. I want to know, and I am petrified, every day, I cried for such a long time, that's going to be one of the children from Belmar Elementary, or St. Rose, anybody out on foot, our older neighbors walking their dog, nobody knows what it is, looking down at this thing, looking up at you, and snarling, I can count its teeth, its teeth are sharp, they come to a point, nobody should have to go through this. That cat was almost eaten alive, that was terrible. I would like somebody, please, to tell me, what is being done here? There's more here. When, when that one was captured on 5th Avenue, a week and a half later, I believe, I got a call from the Board of Health, because they would call me to make sure I was getting my shots, three additional times I had to go to hospital, have my wounds dressed, and three more shots. When she called me and told me the raccoon was positive, and I said to her, I said, "Could I please have a letter to that effect, to put in my papers?" She said, "I can't, because I don't know if that's the one that attacked you." Does anybody have any answers? Can anybody tell me what's being done here? There's more here, I know there's more. Where is these traps? I hear about traps, where are they located?
Well, I could let the chief explain to you what took place over that time, because I know he was working very close during that time with those raccoons out.
So first off, I'm sorry that you were injured by the raccoon.
I have to tell you something, nobody knows, and I'm here, I came here tonight, tomorrow I'm getting up, I'm trying to put it behind me, I'm here because I am petrified that it's going to happen again, a child would never be able to stand it, never.
So we met with the chief of the ASPCA that day, as well as the Humane Society, it is not feasible to put thousands of traps out to catch animals, which many would not be, we would not know if they were rabid raccoons.
Well, see, this is my thing too, it's good to have all these traps around, but if we don't know about it, that's what, something else I wanted to say, we used to have for years, an alert, I call it the alert telephone call, if you flush the hydrants, you do this, you do that, we would get calls. Why in the world wasn't, when that was sighted on Monday, two days before it attacked me, or a raccoon attacked me, why wasn't that call put out Monday night to let us, you think I ever would have been in my yard? You ever think I would have, I always take good care of my house, I've had cancer, I've been through, I've lost my husband last October, do you think I ever would have been out in that yard? I don't know, what happened? How could it be on the loose for three days? Or one of them be on the loose for three days? How could that be? Could you tell me that?
Mr. Di Pasqua, if you remember, I called you a few times.
Yes, I do know, and I called you back eventually, because I was angry.
No, I understand. The one thing I want to caution the council about, I know we received papers regarding to suit, so there's not much we can talk about.
What is it?
You sent papers in regards to a claim possibly?
Well, something had happened there, but I didn't know it was retro, I hadn't planned on doing anything.
I understand that, but understand that we have papers, so we have to be careful, and I'll refer the attorney, but here's what I can say, as far as when or what you heard was going on three days prior, I know that as soon as the chief was aware that somebody's been attacked, we sent out a code red message immediately.
I didn't get one, Monday? Monday, it was, I never got a call Monday.
No, after you were attacked.
No, I didn't get that either, I'll tell you what, my dear neighbor, Tom Foker, came here in the last meeting in February, or council meeting, he was the one that came and talked, and he is the one that got reinstated. That was in February, January 16, I was attacked, I didn't get any calls after that, none whatsoever, and who else did?
I know there was a code red.
We met with the media, we met with the media the day, I believe after your attack, a media release was released, and a code red was released.
I never got, we never got a call?
What about before it happened? That's when the caution went out, that there was a sighting in the town.
I can tell you that we get quite a few calls for raccoons throughout the year, and not just raccoons, foxes and other types of animals, not just Belmar, but every town has wildlife in their jurisdiction.
I do realize that I heard that Point Pleasant, not too long ago, and I could be wrong, captured about 40 of them, how many do we have in our town? All's, I ask all of you, could you please let us know? Maybe it seems very small with everything that's going on in this town, but to me, it's a big thing if you're going to save somebody's life, and that's what's going to happen the next time. And I'm telling you all, I hope to God, every time that you see something or somebody does, don't sweep it under the rug, let the people know, let the people know.
I assure you that I did not sweep it under the rug, we did put a media release out, and we did put code red.
I did call you too, you knew I called you the day after it happened, and I was still waiting for your telephone call, as of today. I called you twice, and if, if you had come to my home and we could have talked, I don't believe I would have been here tonight. I am fighting for everybody, because nobody knows, nobody knows, my daughter and I have a baseball bat, I say go to Taylor's and get your pepper spray, because everybody's going to have to protect themselves, and if it's just, everybody knows there's raccoons in this town. I mean, I've lived with them nocturnally for 60 years in my home, never minded them, but when they're out on foot, let me tell you something, don't ever take a chance, don't. And I'm asking this council to please, please, I don't know why we don't get all the calls, we used to get them all the time for years, now we're only getting them here and there? What is that? How does that all, how does that work out? How's that work out, the calls? It is like, I call you and I don't call that one, how's it go?
It's one message that goes out, so while you're not on the list anymore, I don't know.
Well, we did get it the day after Tom was here, the next morning I answered the phone, I almost fell off my chair, I got one in the morning around 10:30 and one later in the day, and then I got about the car keys, I got one of those. Can anybody, can anybody say to me, and don't worry about the suit, okay, don't, that was done through a family member upon, but I would have to protect myself.
I understand.
Because I am still going, I'm going to be very honest with you, and I thank God for my insurance, that bill for that day and forward is well over $30,000, and I'm still going to a foot doctor and a hand doctor. I'm 83, you speak 83 going on 43, I'm 83 going on 103 now, and I'm asking everybody, with any conscience that any of you have, to make sure, please make sure, that if they're out there, please make sure that everybody gets a telephone call. And I thank you for listening to me, but it's a very, very serious, very serious what it's done, my daughter, what she has been through, what we have been through, nobody knows, two years, two months out of my life and hers, I was trying to get through just losing my husband, and then this happened, it's unfair, this should never have happened, never have happened, and who else is it going to happen to? Does anybody know? Is it going to be the kids? Easter vacation is coming up? Is that what's going to happen to somebody?
I hope to God not.
Seafood festival, they're silent, they just walk along, this one was big, big, I dragged it for 22 feet. It's not a good thing, and I thank you all for listening to me, I really do, and I hope to almighty God, I hope you all remember, I really hope you do, because the rest of my life, I will never, ever, ever forget, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing quick. I would just like to talk about with Facebook, with social media, I do get alerts from the Belmar Police Department on Facebook. Since this happened to my mother, there was at least three, one described things to look for with a rabid raccoon, different things to look for, what happened to the cat on 15th Avenue with the rabid one, what happened to my mother, why couldn't that have been something on Facebook when it was first sighted? Oh, the people of Belmar, just be careful out there, there's been a sighting of a rabid raccoon in town. I know you don't want to frighten people, but the fact of the matter is, maybe this could have been avoided, maybe this could have been avoided. So I'm just saying, I know everybody's not on Facebook, on social media, but like I said, I've gotten things from Belmar Police Department out there and said about the raccoon, but not before, so I just wanted to say that also, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, you can put up the microphone.
Well, I don't need a microphone, I have a big mouth. At any rate, I just would like to know.
Can I have your name and address?
My name is Karen Palmieri, and I live in Marina View Tower here in Belmar, and I love our town, okay? My question is, what is the plan for all of this? What's being done to protect our children at recess, when they come out of the schools? What's being done? Who's out there scouting? Is there a county agency who should be coming to town? Is there a state agent should be checking? The kids are out, and like she said, the vacation is coming, they're all going to be out on the streets, the people are going to be down here for the summer, there should be something planned to inform us at least. Everyone does not get those calls, okay? We get a call that the seniors are not going to have the iris odor red contest, we get that, but that there are rabid raccoons in town when we have children roaming the streets? It's pathetic.
I can speak of the school. I can tell you what happens with the school as far as supervising the students at Belmar Elementary.
I would like to know.
The whole 11th avenue site, the whole field is fenced in, there's only two access points, one of, both of which are actually closed during the day, they're not locked during the day, because they have to stay unlocked, but they're closed until it's time for parents to come in and pick up their kids, usually around 2 o'clock in the afternoon. When the students go out for recess, there's always at least three adults there with them, and they take up various positions on the field, basically so they can supervise the kids, so they can keep their eyes on what the kids are doing, make sure everybody's safe, but they're also looking to see if anything else is going on. Later on, some other teachers will come out, sometimes there's as many as seven or eight adults out there, there's never less than three. Now that the nicer weather is going to come, the gym classes are going to go across 12th Avenue into Memorial Field, there's always at least two adults with them, those are supervised classes, usually no more than 60 children, and they're all supervised by adults, there's never, the kids are never left alone, and I can tell you that after the incident, the school not only emailed all their parents, they sent written letters home, which they almost never do anymore, they sent written letters home, talking about what happened, warning people about how to tell if there's going to be a problem with a raccoon, see a raccoon walking around in the daylight, there's definitely something wrong with that animal. So they really went out of their way to make sure that the families were informed about how to try to stay safe. Safety with the students over there is number one.
So the teachers did a better job than the town, as far as informing everyone.
I would give credit to the superintendent.
And I'm glad, and I hope that children are safe.
Principal Wil.
I could say that we met with all the schools, prior to the messages going out, we've met with the Health Department on numerous occasions here at Belmar, and we've worked hand in hand, to this day we're working hand in hand with the ASPCA, with Chief Ostercitra, who expanded his patrol, not just at Belmar, but this around the towns.
Could I ask you something? Are the teachers armed with anything? Anybody that's out with those children, do they have anything? This animal is silent, it goes across the ground and it blends in with everything. Do they have anything out there? It's fine, you could have 25 people out there, well, I'm just telling you, you're shaking your head.
No, the answer to your question is no, they don't have any weapons.
So trying to think of what they might have.
Anything, pepper spray. You realize, what would they do if one walked up and attacked a child? What would they do?
They wouldn't let that happen, ma'am. They wouldn't let that happen.
Oh, please.
They would get, at the first sign of any kind of danger, the students are removed from the area immediately.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Bill Garcia, 522 14th Ave. And I want to just rewind two meetings ago. I missed the last one. My dad had passed away. But I want to follow up with the cost overruns at Mazer. Okay? So we rehash that. We, a gentleman here, he was explaining all the cost overruns with Mazer. We're looking to float some debt, take on some debt to satisfy that, so we can go back and appeal for the grants, which obviously you didn't know today in Trenton. Thank God. When, when we typically do a project, is there a contingency on that project? Okay, so you're doing a million dollar project. And I speak from my experience again, okay? You, you know that, I sent you an email, personal email. Okay? When we take on a million dollar project to lead a float of ten to fifty percent contingency for things that are on the street. Okay? So you're sitting on a hundred, hundred fifty grant extra, because when you dig the hole in the sheet, you don't know what you're going to find.
The problem, the problem was that, that there's a process when you have a grant. And not only, if we see a cost overrun coming, not only do we have to call the state of New Jersey or the federal government, wherever the grant is coming from, and talk to them about this cost overrun before we move on. The problem is with the Lake Como outfall pipe, those calls were never made. So...
But that was only one project. We're, we're looking at cost overruns on multiple projects, so I'm not mistaken.
Well, the purveyance were done the same way.
Right.
I can't think of one project in this town that it wasn't done that way, without making the calls that should have been made.
Can we think of a project?
There was, any, anytime there's a design change to a building, or any change to anything that we're doing, it has to come before mayor and council, because technically it breaks down the money. I sat on the council for two years. I don't ever remember anyone coming here, all those change orders. So, when we're talking about the last administration, we don't know exactly what was going on. We're trying to, trying to straighten, straighten out what's going on moving forward. We have all this baggage behind us, and we're trying to work through it.
I think that's why they were campaigning for you, the Democrats, actually. I think Dory Knopf, my girl, was campaigning for you.
Oh, was she?
You dropped that term in your lap, right? But yes, today, if you don't, if you have a contingency for a project, I don't know, a project I've run on the civil side in over forty years.
Well, if we're doing a project ourselves, you're absolutely right. If we're funding a project, if we're funding a project ourselves, you're absolutely right.
Eric, can I?
Yes.
See, it's apples and oranges.
Okay.
The issues with Mazer that the mayor was talking about has nothing to do with contingencies. It has something to do with the way that they were appointed.
There were change orders.
No? Hold on a second. I'll try to tell you again. Change orders deal with the contractor. The six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the mayor is out in Trenton today trying to get back had nothing to do with the contractor per se. It had to do with Mazer being... Well, then, okay.
But there was, but there was multiple projects. There were multiple projects that we talked about two weeks ago, not, not the outfall in Lake Como. That's just one project. There are multiple projects that we've been able to recoup funds on, because we have a satisfied debt with Mazer through the change orders. Is that correct?
No.
Close.
Well, these, Tom, Mayor Alcercitra, I said yes.
Well, there's a, well, the extra, Mr. Dasty, the extra hundred and fifty thousand that, that Mazer is looking for, there were change orders, correct?
They are looking for additional work that they say they did in conjunction with additional work that allegedly the contractor did. But that has nothing to do with contingencies in the bid process. So I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no, I got you. So the, I, I've not worked in, in, you know, on the public side. I worked only on, you know, the civil side, on my side of the equation. So in the end, we've, we've had the cost overruns, okay? And what is the update on that, settling that with Mazer? Okay? Have we paid that? Have we, we were going, we were going to go out and look for debt. We were going to take on more debt. Right? We're going to do a consolidation loan, is what I got from that meeting.
Well, we were, we were thinking about doing that. We're still working with our CFO to see if that's the way we're going to go. Or are we going to negotiate some of these things down? So it's still up in the air. It was one of those things that, that we're in a catch-twenty-two position, and you're correct.
I got you.
That we have to close out some of these projects to get the grant money, to finish it up. And, but we're still looking to find out, are we getting, how much are we going to get? And is it going to cover what's being done? Or are we going to have to negotiate with contractors and everybody that was involved in the project, and not go that route? So that, it's, it's still something we're looking at. I mean, we brought it up to say that it's, it's possible, an option for us to go that way. But, so, we're, we're dealing with, the CFO, we're taking a look at it. Mr. Dasty's taking a look at it. Every, our, our new engineers are trying to figure out what's the best option for us to, how to deal with this. One of the options is maybe to negotiate with them and work the debt down that way. But, you know, it's one of the options. We're looking at everything before. The last thing I want to do is go out for more debt, because the, the debt that we have is absolutely crazy, so...
Okay. And typically, when we, when we, when we do take on debt to fund a project, do we service the debt over the life of the asset? Okay? So that's, that's really a question. You go, you go and build a building, the building has a thirty-year depreciable life in, in what I'm, what I'm used to. Okay? You depreciate that building over thirty years. Okay? So when we take on debt to fund projects, do we service that debt? The question is, do we service that debt over the usable life of the asset?
The, well, statute, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Statute, there's a statute that says, and I don't remember the exact number of years, but for all the different capital projects, the legislature has said how long you can bond that project for. So there is that type of thing, and it's for different type of projects, different type of...
Sure. Change, I agree. Okay. Okay. Because I think, you know, I want to, want the council to understand as a taxpayer, so we talked about, and you know, all the sensational pressures, that, you know, our taxes are going to go up and everything else in the coast, or in January, I believe it was. As a taxpayer, I have genuine concern, obviously, because I think you as a council, and as a mayor specifically, you guys are challenged with coming back to your constituency and saying, "Hey, how am I going to repo reserves?" Okay? Because reserves are depleted. How am I going to fund the projects that I need to do to improve the town, or at least maintain the town on a sustainable basis? And how am I going to service my debt? Okay? Without raising people's taxes. Okay? I'm expecting a tax increase. Okay? And I'm, I'm okay with that. What I don't want to have happen, and I think you guys have, have an inevitable test in front of you. Okay? Or an unknown. Okay? And as you got to come, I, I think this forum here, you should be able to come to your constituency and say, "Here's our plan. We're going to take on X amount of debt. We're going to be tax generating this much revenue. We're going to repo this much reserves. We're going to service debt in this schedule, on this schedule, and something that we can hold your feet to the fire to." Because the other guys blew it, you know? I mean, you know that. You, you two were part of it.
Well...
Okay? You're sitting, you're sitting out there too. Okay? So we're all part of it. Okay? And I'm, I'm willing to, willing to take my license as a taxpayer, and so make sure we're buttoned up. Okay? Because I don't think you're going to come back to me for tax increases year over year, over year. Okay?
All right. Well, that's, that's, that's what our CFO and all our professionals are digging into.
And I look forward to meeting CFO, Ed.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we're, we're still, believe it or not, still finding things every day and peeling back the onion to get to the bottom where we're at. Once we're at the bottom, and we figure out exactly what kind of plan we're going to be putting in place to handle all, all of this, we will definitely be informing the public. So, as we go forward.
Form a hunting group for Dory. That's what you need to do. Form a hunting, form a hunting group for Dory. Okay? That's a responsible gap. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Linda Sharkas, 404th Avenue. I'm here today because I was walking around town and we ran into Barry DePeppe.